Welcome, everyone. I now call the September 16th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kerd?
Here.
Councilmember Menke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. First up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Councilmembers Zorn's?
Not a change, but just a suggestion of being mindful of time, and I need to leave as close to 9:30 as possible. So I don't know if there's some re-editing that the rest of council would like to do for this or not, but...
Let's see how the meeting goes.
It's a full slate.
We do. We have a full one tonight. If you guys are here for the whole meeting, you're in for a commitment. All right, next up is public engagement opportunities. You can learn about streamside landscapes. You can join our free webinar with Snohomish Conservation District to learn how to manage weeds, prevent erosion, and add native plants for low-maintenance streamside landscapes. It's Thursday, October 2nd, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. It's also Pollution Prevention Week. Follow our daily tips on social media to cut stormwater pollution at home, at work, on the road, and while enjoying the outdoors as part of your awareness recognition. Then test your pollution IQ with our quiz. It goes September 15th through 21st. And we also have Sustain-a-Mania. Bothell's Annual Sustainability Festival returns at City Hall. There will be touch trucks, live music, a repair cafe, food trucks, and a wide variety of local artisans, businesses, and organizations. It's September 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And if you've never been to Sustain-a-Mania before, the name, like, it's kind of like a really fun market. Like, sustain-a-mania isn't really something that sounds super descriptive, but if you want to come down and have fun, come down and have fun. All right, we have a couple proclamations. The first one is for Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month is a month-long celebration observed each year, September 15th through October 15th, to recognize the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors are indigenous to North, Central, and South America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Spain. And whereas the day of September 15th is culturally significant, is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, while Mexico, Chile, and Belize celebrate their independence days on September 16th, 18th, and 21st respectively. And whereas though the city celebrates our Hispanic and Latino community members and staff beyond this month, we take this opportunity to give extra recognition to their historical, cultural, and contemporary contributions to Bothell. And whereas we honor the invaluable ways that Hispanic and Latino Americans who live, work, and learn in Bothell influence and enrich our community and reaffirm our commitment to addressing the barriers to opportunity that many still face. And whereas the city is committed to fostering meaningful relationships with our Hispanic and Latino community members and creating a community where all members feel safe, welcome, and valued. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in the City of Bothell, and invite all to celebrate the rich diversity of the Hispanic and Latino communities and the many ways they contribute to our city. And I believe we have Claudia Salas to accept.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. My name is Claudia Salas, and I am honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Latino Education and Training Institute, LETI, and the Latino Leadership Initiative, LLI. LETI has been serving the battle on Snohomish County region for over two decades, empowering Latino families through education, leadership, and community engagement. Our programs support first-generation students, immigrant families, and emerging leaders, helping them navigate systems, build confidence, and creating lasting impact. One of our cornerstone programs is the Latino Leadership Initiative, LLI, a year leadership training that brings together young Latinons from Edmunds College, Skagit Valley College, and the University of Washington in Bothell. Through mentorship, community involvement, and skill-building workshops, LLI helps students become confident, engaged leaders, who are prepared to make a difference. We are excited to invite you to two upcoming events that reflect our mission and celebrate our community. LETI Annual Fundraising Gala on September 27, and a special event theme celebrating the impact of unity and action, featuring dinner, live music, and community action. And the first exhibit of Art Latino on October 11 and 12, showcasing handmade works by Latin American artists across disciplines like painting, embroidery, sculpture, and more. This proclamation is a meaningful recognition of the contributions Latino communities make every day, and a reminder of the importance of visibility, unity, and action. Thank you for your continued support and for honoring our community during Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a copy of the proclamation. And if you would like to get a picture?
Yeah.
We have one more proclamation, and then we'll all come down and we'll have two separate pictures, so we don't have to jump back and forth.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay.
I've been thinking about that for a little while, and I decided, like, this is the day. All right, next up, we have National Co-Responder and Crisis Responder Week. Whereas co-response is defined as a multidisciplinary partnership between first responders and human services professionals who respond to emergencies involving behavioral health crises and people experiencing complex medical needs. And whereas a crisis responder is a trained professional who provides immediate onsite or remote support to individuals experiencing mental health, behavioral health, or substance use crisis. And whereas co-responders and crisis responders provide critical services by working collaboratively with law enforcement, emergency services, healthcare providers, and community organizations to ensure a safe, appropriate, and person-centered response to crisis situations. And whereas the work of co-responders and crisis responders promotes de-escalation, connects individuals to services, and upholds the dignity and humanity of those experiencing crisis. And whereas the Regional Crisis Response Agency was formed in 2022 as a collaborative effort among the North King County cities of Bothell, Kenmore, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park, and Shoreline to provide consolidated and standardized regional mobile crisis response services for the five-city region. And whereas the services provided by the Regional Crisis Response Agency begin with a person-centered approach focusing on compassionate and immediate crisis response, de-escalation, resource referral, and follow-up tailored to the specific needs of those experiencing behavioral health challenges. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim September 14th through September 20th, 2025, in Bothell as National Co-Responder and Crisis Responder Week, to express our appreciation and gratitude for all co-responders and crisis responders working in the City of Bothell. And I believe we have Kimberly Hardy and Renee Cox here to accept from the Regional Crisis Response Agency.
Actually, a small correction on that. I'm Renee Cox, one of the crisis responder supervisors. Kimberly Hardy's out on Navy duties, so she was not able to join us, but I have two of our crisis responders here. Tasha Henry, one of Bothell's own, and Emily Evans, and she is one of our partner crisis responders in Shoreline and Kenmore, and she's cross-trained in Bothell, just so you know that. So, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, and all the city council. We accept this proclamation with a lot of honor. I've been with the program since its inception, and Brooke Bitner, our boss, executive director, wants me to thank you as well. You did a great job, Mayor Thompson, saying quite a bit of what we do. For those that don't know and maybe want to hear just a little bit more, we're the RCR agency, sometimes called Racer, and we have 12 crisis responders across the five cities you mentioned, Bothell, Kenmore, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park, and Shoreline. And we are covering the calls right now, so the 911 calls directly, right now from the hours of 6:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. There's hope down the line to be a 24-hour service. Just like you said, we help in immediate de-escalation on scene as behavioral health first responders. And something very exciting this year in the last Washington state legislation is that co-responders and crisis responders were deemed first responders. So we hope in the future to see some of those same benefits moving forward, and we just, we really love the honor because we're in there getting dirty and taking care of people all at the same time. And we do things that people, that I, even being a crisis responder six years ago in a very small, temporary, part-time, we'll see if this works, kind of capacity, here we are with this large program in North King County. It's pretty exciting. We do things from watch little kids on a crime scene because the parents are distraught and being interviewed, to the true behavioral health crises where someone feels depressed and wants to hurt themselves, to someone who has a psychotic illness and folks call in a welfare check. So I could go on and on with a list of the types of things we respond to, and we really love what we do. We genuinely, I feel that we've hired folks that are in it for all the right reasons. So I want to thank also Chief Superlick and Deputy Chief Beard because they and the patrol partners with Bothell have been so supportive from day one, and thank you for investing in this program and giving your community the right response at the right time from now, also behavioral health professionals. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is, oh, yes, thank you, pictures. I promised pictures, and then I forgot. All right, next up is public comment. The city has accepted public comments in writing as well as sign-ups for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make notes of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We received one written comment from Mary Farley regarding consequences of construction on neighboring properties, and that has been made part of the record. You've all received that written comment. I do not have anybody signed up to speak tonight, but if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to do so, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name's Michael Hughes. I'm a landowner here in the City of Bothell. I am part of the 520 widening. I find it rather disheartening to know that my land is going to be condemned. I will lose that property, which is, I've had for some years. We have no idea what you're going to do. What are the plans? Are we going to be compensated? What are the consequences? Nobody's reached out to me and said, what's going to do, what you're going to do. So my feeling is that if you would please inform the public as to what you're going to do, you might forestall a lot of panic. And so, thank you.
You're fine.
My name is Mary Farley, and I apologize for the length of the document that I sent to you, but you will remember that I spoke to you as a citizen for a day and a lifetime, not a day, but a lifetime, and it was very wordy then, too. So now I'm speaking to you about the loss of a lifetime of caring for the property and the memories of our family. For 72 years, we have lived at this property, and I regret the loss of what's going to happen next. I want to acknowledge the city for being accommodating to meet some of our needs in their planning. They have made some accommodations. And the team that is making the acquisition of the property has been very good about listening to our concerns. However, I documented to you, and I have receipts, that our family paid $18,532.85 because of the damage of construction to our property in the past. And I had the landscaping that you're going to acquire appraised three years ago, and that was $94,873. So I think you would agree that my family has lost $113,405.85. And I forgot to document the damage that was done to the house when they were tunneling bright route. Money isn't going to compensate for this loss. And what I want from the City of Bothell is that you will assure us in writing that you will repair and restore the utilities and the damage that you may cause during this construction, that you support the businesses that will be threatened because of this construction because you're taking away a lot of their access. And then I want to know, have the mucklechutes approved these plans? Because they have a lot of say in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? If so, please step forward and state your name for the record. Go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Scott Susat. I own Bothell Furniture. I'm one of the co-owners. Like Mary was just talking about, I just have concerns about our business. And we were over here for 30 years, and we moved, bought a building over here, and the process was not easy. I felt like the city didn't care at all about us as neighbors. In fact, one of the days when you guys were doing a photo thing over here, your employees parked in our lot, filled it up during business hours, and I came over here to talk to the person in charge, and it's just more of just the, like, we're the city, we're big and powerful, we don't care. The amount of taxes that, our store is 40 years old this year. I've been there 38 of those years. It just feels like the city doesn't care, and that's our biggest concern. Our business is cyclical. It comes and goes with economies. For you guys to tear up that street in front of our business, and then I found out you're going to dig a hole in front of our parking lot, I'm hoping we have some control of our actual property, like, on dates, because there's times when we're busy, and there's times that we're not, and I just feel like we're not going to get or be able to control any of that. And that's my biggest concern with dealing with the city. It just feels like nobody cares in the city about businesses in particular. And like I said, I've been doing this for 38 years in this city, and it just, it just feels, it doesn't feel good. So that's my concern. So I'm hoping, hoping they'll listen to us and actually try to, you know, work around our needs as well, because, you know, we're providing, you know, we have 11 employees, pay a lot of taxes, just, it'd be nice to know that what we say or what we need can be taken into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I do have two people now online. If either of you wish to speak, please use the raise hand function, and I will panel you in for three minutes. I'm not seeing anybody.
You sure? We're happy to listen if anybody else has something to say. All right.
Thank you.
All right, I, right now on our, on our agenda, we have an executive session that we've put early in the meeting, but it's supposed to last an hour with possible action after, and then we have reports and a few other items. So I am going to propose after that is item 9A, which is the ordinance relating to the acquisition by eminent domain of property necessary for the Bothell Way Multimodal Improvements Project. It's Agenda Bill 25162. I'm going to guess we have some people in the audience here who want to watch that discussion, and having you guys wait for us to go into executive session in that room and talk for an hour doesn't seem tremendously polite. So I am going to propose to council that we move item 9A on our agenda up to right now.
So moved.
Second, anyone? I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Kerd to move item 9A on our agenda to right now. Would anybody like, yes?
Mayor, the one thing is, is we may need to take a slight pause to get the staff member who's doing the presentation to make sure that they can come. I think they were expecting to come a little bit later, but we'll, we'll go do our best.
Okay, sounds good.
Want to do some other things?
Let's, well, let's, we've got a motion on the table right now, so let's handle that.
Can I offer an amendment to do council reports first? How much time are we looking to? So that's my amendment, is to do council reports before the right-of-way ordinance.
I'll second. All right, I have an emotion amending the prior motion to put council reports before item 9A in a second. Does anybody want to speak to the amending motion? You guys are, you guys are getting a firsthand experience of just how fun Robert's rules can be. All right, let's vote on the amendment. City clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right, and now on the main motion, or the underlying motion, or the...
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's do council reports. Committee reports, community reports, and conversations.
I will just say that...
Somebody please say something after all that.
The Eastside Transportation Partnership did not meet last Friday in preparation for the PSRC general meeting that's coming up, which I believe my colleagues will be attending in my place, we discussed. But yeah, so I don't have an update from ETP.
I did offer. I'm happy to go. You got to send me where it is and when it is. Okay.
I'll do a community report. Tomorrow, or no, Thursday, RIA8 Salmon Recovery Council will be meeting, but I'd be remiss if I didn't share with the community that now is the time that salmon are coming into our watershed. And so, King County runs Salmon Season, S-E-E-A-S-O-N, I think, and it's on the, there's some links on the city's website as well. There's a spot in Bothell, but also all around King County that folks can go and look at spawning salmon in their habitat and learn more about salmon. So encourage everybody to check that information out.
All right, I am going to call for a quick break because we are waiting to start. Kyle, any suggestions on five versus 10 minutes?
Don't have that prediction. Let's go 10, and we'll see where we can come up with...
All right, it is 6:25. We are adjourning until 6:35. All right, everybody, we're going to get going here.
Recording in progress.
I like when we can facilitate connection among neighbors here, too. So I'm glad, I'm glad we were all enjoying the break. Next up is Agenda Bill 25162, property acquisition for Bothell Way Multimodal. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the additional time. We are, we are going to be able to pivot. Robert is in the building, so he'll be joining us in just a minute. He was grabbing his file. So the, we've, we've heard a little bit from, from the community tonight, so again, thank you for your flexibility, council, of pivoting on the agenda order. I think that's very helpful. Tonight, before you is going to be an ordinance to consider that would approve authorizing, if necessary, eminent domain. Again, there will be further conversations to be had, and staff will explain that. Tonight, we do have several members of the team here and available, and available to answer questions, of course. The presentation will be by Robert McCadden, who is our capital projects engineer on this project, and then I'm going to turn things over to Aaron Lenhart, too, who really will just kind of get things started. And again, as we're just in time in this, you'll see Robert join us here momentarily. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, council, deputy mayor and mayor. So this evening, we are before you requesting approval of an ordinance to allow the city to utilize condemnation if absolutely necessary. So the council action is approve an ordinance authorizing the acquisition by eminent domain, if needed, of property necessary for the Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvements Project. All right, so I'm just going to keep going. So just a reminder, the Bothell Way Multimodal Project extends from Reader Way north to 240th Street Southeast, and this is the roadway formerly known as State Route 527, which the city assumed ownership of quite a few years ago, so that we could do projects like this that do provide multimodal capability. So some of the project enhancements are for multi-mobility, so for pedestrians and bicycles, and Robert's here to save me, and also to enhance safety. So to take on the project status, I'm going to turn it over to Robert.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, and council members. Which side are we on? Is this three?
Yep.
Okay. The Bothell Way Multimodal Improvement Project spans Bothell Way from Reader Way at the southern extents to 240th Street Southeast at the northern extents, and aims to improve mobility and safety throughout the corridor for all users. Project components include, but are not limited to, increasing the number of travel lanes from two to three to four to five, sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, a two-way bike lane on the east side of the roadway, controlled access with U-turns at select locations, and associated utility and stormwater improvements. The project is coordinating with private utilities for their relocation. Puget Sound Electric, Puget Sound Energy Electrical will underground their electrical lines within King County, while Snohomish County, PUD, will relocate their electrical aerial lines, and they will remain aerial. and appraisal review processes and beginning negotiations with property owners. Construction is scheduled to begin in twenty twenty-seven. We'd have, uh, taken, uh, some efforts to reduce the property needs, and the project team is committed to minimizing the impact to property owners as much as feasible, and has taken the following measures to minimize the amount of property acquisition required. We have provided one two-way bike lane instead of two one-way bike lanes. We have narrowed the vehicular lanes, and we have reduced the planter strip width in select locations. The project team has been engaging with the public regarding the project since twenty twenty-two and directly with affected property owners since twenty twenty-four. To date, that inclusion engagement has included two virtual workshops, which were held in twenty twenty-two with the intent of introducing the project to the public. In twenty twenty-five, we held an open house that was held in order to elicit public comment on the project. I was not personally present at the open house, however, I've heard that it was well attended, and the photo here on this slide is of the actual open house. The project began its right-of-way phase in twenty twenty-four and has been in contact with property owners since for items such as introduction meetings, appraisal meetings, and offer meetings. Condemnation notices were also mailed to all affected property owners along the project alignment, and notices were also published in the Seattle Times and Daily Journal of Commerce. And the council action we'd like you to consider tonight is approving an ordinance for authorizing the, authorizing the acquisition by eminent domain if needed of property necessary for the Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvement Project. And that concludes my talk.
Thank you. Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Um, I know when I first joined council in twenty twenty-three, it was right as the city was working on the Meridian and Two Fortieth Roundabout, and condemnation if necessary came up, and it was kind of surprising for me as a lifetime Bothell resident to understand the role of condemnation in a project like this. And I was wondering if you could speak to that, since we have an audience tonight that's very keen to know more.
Yeah, um, I may turn this over to our attorney, Eileen, to kind of go into some of the details, but basically it's a process for the city to acquire the property that's necessary to construct the improvements, and it has to be for, like, overall public good, but, um,
Yeah, so thanks, Robert. Um, I'll, I'll take a stab at this. So we've, we've definitely spoken about it before. So, um, really, in the, in the property acquisition phase, there's, there's several options and opportunities. And so, again, as Robert covered, it starts off with, with outreach, and we do our, um, staff does their best to, to contact every resident through various means of letters. And, I mean, ultimately, it comes down to, to door-to-door opportunities. Again, I want to emphasize that tonight's action doesn't then condemn property, right? What this does is it does allow for that as a, as a tool. However, the city's interest is always working with individual property owners to find the best agreement possible. We've, we've seen that in other projects and other phases, as you represented. And, um, again, there, I, we've, we've heard comment tonight about, um, some, some individual needs. Again, that, there, we can't, we can't grant every wish and, at the same time, too, there's always the opportunity to have the conversation. At the end of the day, though, there is the, the aspect of that, under state law, there is the opportunity for, um, public agencies. That's for cities, counties, sound transit, different, uh, different ones of there, this is a tool, if necessary, of saying if there's a public good, there's a public benefit, um, that, that condemnation can be pursued. And again, there's legal precedent and legal requirements that have to be met in that, in that process. So it does give protection to property owners in it, but it also gives the public interest some weight as well. So part of council's consideration tonight is, is that an appropriate tool for a project of this magnitude? Hope that's helpful, and if not, um, we'll, we'll try again.
No, it really is. I think being the second newest up here, it's something that I've dealt with a handful of times, and other people with more seniority have dealt with more, but as a resident, I don't think that it comes up in your day-to-day experience of living in the city, and it can be very easy to think that it's like going to be this big, like, hammer coming down from the, you know, the all-powerful government. And I hope that tonight people are taking a chance to connect with our staff, too, because they're here, and we tried to facilitate some of that. I saw different colleagues doing that at the break, but I hope everyone can talk.
Yeah, it's a great point, Councilmember Dodd. And in addition, we, um, we're also joined online by Kim Pratt, who is, uh, one of the attorneys at Madrona Law, who's been supporting this project. I saw her at her end up, and Kim, if there's anything that you'd like to add, or if I, if I missed a good piece of context, please help us out.
Uh, no, that was great, City Manager. Um, I was just going to add that, you know, first we, your ordinance directly says we need to try and negotiate that these, um, uh, fair market value with these owners. If we're not able to, then we will file condemnation cases. And even then, we have to show to the court that this project is a public use and that the properties are necessary. We have to prove that first. Uh, and then if there had to be a trial, it would be on, what is just compensation to pay these owners for the property rights that the city needs for the Bothell Way Multimodal Project, Project? So a lot of proof on the city's part once we even get into court, and I just wanted to make sure you know that, that, um, there is a judge or a jury deciding what just compensation is in all of these cases. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
I'm good. Thank you, Kim. And Kyle, and everyone.
Council resigns.
Um, I have some, a couple of questions and comments. One is, when I was looking at the, the maps, um, or the plats, the, you know, the drawings, I saw proposed drainage easements, and I don't know if they look larger than they intended to be, but it looked like it took, proposed drainage easements looked like it took up a big chunk of people's properties. Can, can you explain to me what those, those are?
Yeah, there's, the drainage easements are going to be used for the maintenance and upkeep of the public drainage, drainage pipes or drainage detention vaults or something like that. You're going to see with a, with a pipe, maybe you're going to see, I'm not sure the exact width, five, six, seven, eight feet. That's enough for somebody to excavate the pipe and maintain it if they need to, whereas the drainage easements for the detention vaults, there, um, we're going to need to get vector trucks onto those parcels, so those areas of property, so they can clean out those detention vaults.
So they couldn't, so a property owner couldn't plant something on top of that? Generally speaking, beyond a lawn or a ground cover?
It depends on the location. Like, we, we have some proposed in parking lots, which you couldn't, you know, um, do one there. If, uh, we need to get a vector truck in and be able to clean it out, and there'd be like a maintenance hole lid that they need to access, a series of those on a, on a structure. Um, and so it's depending on what the configuration is, really.
Okay.
But it's not necessarily precluded from doing, like, landscaping on top of it.
Okay, well, managing our water, our stormwater is important. So I don't want to minimize this by my, um, next question. Is it, is it taken into consideration when that easement is made, what that's going to impact for the property owner, what they can do with it? So, for example, you know, if they had a lot that they could do X number of things with, is, will that easement impact what they can do once that easement's in place with their remaining property?
I believe it does, but I would turn that one over probably to Eileen, too. That's kind of more of a, or Kim, more of an appraisal-type question, something that comes into, to play during the appraisal period.
All right.
An appraiser does take that into consideration. How much, um, is the property owner damaged by this easement? And that will play into how much the owner is, or how much that easement is worth, and that the city will have to pay for.
And, and that's looking at the potential, uh, uh, earning power of that property once that easement goes into place, how's that, how that has impacted on that property?
Earning power usually isn't impacted by easements. If it could be, that would be a special circumstance. Usually it's based on how much the owner can still use the property where in the easement area.
Okay, all right. Um, I have another question. This may be putting the cart before the horse, but I know as you go along five two seven, there's a very, very steep driveway, you know, that's there. And I'm trying to remember if that property has access on the backside. So that would be what, on the northeast side of the property? Looking at widening five two seven, how is that going to affect, you know, single-family homes that have a very steep driveway as it is now?
Yeah, well, in general, we're working to get all the driveways tied in, so they're, they're acceptable.
Okay, okay. Um, then the other question that there was a comment made, I, you know, I, I want to say that the city, I've been here almost eight years in the city council capacity, and what I've seen in the city in the last, oh, five, six years is a real growth to being thoughtful for the impacts on private, uh, property owners and helping to soften those impacts and restore. So I know we got a great staff that, that does things in earnest. But I don't know how we can guarantee, but in acquisition, you know, we're talking about, one, one speaker spoke to, their landscaping up front is going to be seriously impacted, and that's going to affect, um, their quality of life. Now they're exposed to a busy street that they weren't exposed to. So I hope, I mean, I guess maybe you can tell me how the city, is the city going to step in and say, we're going to do this to restore, start restoring what the function that you lost with the landscape that we took? Is that part of the discussion?
It's definitely something that's considered. I can't speak to it directly myself. But it is definitely something that's considered after the, um, the appraisal process is complete, then we meet with the property owner, and there's a chance to discuss these things that the appraisal might not have caught.
Okay, okay, because, you know, I, I think everyone can appreciate, these are people's homes or business, homes or businesses, and this, even though we're talking about the public good, this, this give can be very, very personal. So I, I hope we, as a city, we stay mindful of that.
We, we definitely do, but we do also have to work within the constraints of the, the Uniform Act, which guides these types of acquisitions.
Right, right. Well, if we can come together as a city, that would be great and, um, take care of each other. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kerd?
Thanks. Um, the maps that are included in the packet are, um, great. Thank you for the technical information there. I'm wondering if you can explain a little bit more about temporary construction easements and what that might entail. Is that something that, um, people would expect, um, uh, disruption, sort of temporarily during construction, but after construction is finalized and buttoned up, however long from now that may ever be, if at all? It will be restored to current condition or better, like, what's the, what is temporary construction easement, uh, look like after the?
Yeah, so if we're, if we're changing grade, like, on, on the roadway, we might have to tie in the property. It might not be a perfect match. And so that allows us to go in there and tie that in. It might be if we need to pour some concrete, like a sidewalk, we need to put some forms that extend outside the right-of-way, that would, that would fall into a temporary construction easement. It's area that we need to physically construct the project, and the idea that it would be restored to as good as a condition it was previously or better. It might not always look, especially if its grades are changing, it might not look exactly the same, but other times it may look very similar.
Great. Um, so during construction projects, how has the city or public works been coordinating questions during construction? Is there someone on staff that residents who might be impacted by construction are able to communicate with their problems? Do they have kind of a direct line?
Yeah, um, the project manager's contact information is on the website, and that has been given to all the property owners and the correspondents. And then the, the inspectors usually are onsite, too, and make friends with the, the neighboring property owners and, and that being another source of, uh, communication for them.
Great. Um, also in those documents, there's a whole lot of different types of easements and proposed acquisition, proposed dedication. Um, can you explain a little bit more about the stream easement and how Horse Creek, um, might be changing? Or, um, why, why this project is, um, adds another level of complexity because of Horse Creek and the fact that we're trying to do some restoration opportunities in there, too? What, uh, what are the impacts from a stream easement? What does that look like?
Impacts from a stream easement? Um, we have the, the physical stream, and then you have the stream buffers that are on the property, um, that are going to restrict what can be done with the property.
Okay, so like, I'm thinking hardscaping would be limited in those areas?
In the buffer areas.
Yeah, so generally, like, creating new, um, wetland area in those, um, stream easements that come along with all the same critical areas code that, as if there was a stream there from Time and Memorial?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, what, what sort of responsibilities do the private landowners have if they have a stream easement? Do you talk to them through that? What, is there some sort of, like, education? I know we have some stream-side landowner workshops right now, but how do you, how do you educate? How do you bring people along with, with that?
It may be that we need to follow up.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we need to follow up on these questions, and, but, uh, I just want to note that typically we will provide something like mitigation plan. So after the project is complete, we, you know, we still need to maintain the, the string easement area for, depends on what the permit actually requires. And sometimes we have to provide, like, five-year monitoring and also, uh, you know, the maintenance for up to five years.
So it's really the city's responsibility to steward those areas until things are really back to a natural condition. It's not on this property owners to sort of, like, make a stream happen?
No.
Okay, good. Uh, that, that clears up some questions that I think I've heard from some folks, so, um, uh, that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and thank you for being here to kind of explain the process. With the, with the length of time that this, uh, project has been worked on, it, I think it's a lot of information for the public to take in. Um, and I really do appreciate your efforts to, uh, make that information accessible and, and available. Is it possible, like, if, because I believe there were fifty-some-odd properties affected by this project that were listed in our, um, in our packet?
Sorry, sixty-nine altogether.
Sixty-nine total?
Yes.
Okay, and so, um, when looking at, when looking at the, especially the maps in the packet, individual properties are named and numbered, and estimates for, um, for how much is, let me say it correctly, how much acquisition is, is estimated. And so each of those individual property owners, um, will be met with, correct? And, um, conversations will be had around fair market value and, and what, um, so just, I, I just want to make sure that everyone understands sort of the process and what can be expected, that there will be opportunities to, to discuss, to learn about the, the needs, um, of the acquisition, and then negotiation around, around fair market value. And it, I also would like to know, is it possible for individuals in the community to reach out to staff and talk about their particular, um, the, um, property and how it appears in the maps? And like, look at their property and understand what, you know, what all the markings on the map looks like and mean for anybody who might, um, want more information and clarity on the process? Is that an option available?
Yeah, it's always an option. We've already tried to open up the doors and tried to meet with the property owners, at least the ones that will be constructing it. I don't know, not sure how many property owner meetings altogether we've gone through. I think it's, we've contacted, I think, sixty-five out of the sixty-nine, um, direct contact. I think there's a few that we only left voicemails for or having trouble getting a hold of, but we've met with a lot of the property owners. getting a hold of, but we've met with a lot of the property owners and opened up a line of contact, shared the, the plans for their property during the initial contact. And then we also met them out there for appraisals or gave them the opportunity to meet us for appraisals and kind of provide any additional information that the appraiser might not have or not be able to get about the property or how the property is used. So everybody should have our contact information.
Great. Thank you for explaining that process. I think just clarity can be really helpful when people are trying to wrap their heads around something that's complicated and unfamiliar. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And then we'll, we'll be meeting with them personally too when we make offers as well.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here and sitting in the hot seat today. I appreciate that this is, this project is probably good. We've been hearing, we've been, have been on council for years and this is project, we've talked about it quite a bit and it's a public good generation. It will be beneficial for residents, generations to come. So I appreciate that. My question is, following along what Councilmember Zornz and Councilmember Broderick mentioned, is about the process of getting us to this meeting right here, right now, specifically the engagement with the property owners. There were a few opportunities. They were sporadic. They were far, you know, few and far in between, you know, so for something as big as this. Firstly, let me go back. The word condemnation is a big word. I think, I know there's a legal term. It's a legal thing, but I feel like eminent domain is slightly less in-your-face type, you know, blow, but condemnation is a, and it's a process. It's a legal term. It's like there are a lot of legal terms that sound very strong and painful, you know. Can you talk a bit more about the, the engagements with the property owners? You alluded to it a little bit. You had, we had some conversations, sixty-five of the sixty-nine owners. What, what was some of the feedback that you heard when you were, we shared some of the information?
Well, during the initial meetings, which was more with the property owners down towards downtown Bothell, up through the curve as you go out of Bothell, generally from private property owners were hearing about the landscaping. That was a big issue for the private property owners. And then for the commercial property owners, it was parking was their, their biggest concern.
Parking during the construction or?
After it's, after it's completed, since we're acquiring some of the right of way, the, the parking stall count on their properties is getting reduced. And so they were concerned about that.
What is somehow, what was our response to those concerns?
So we're still, I believe we're still in the process of vetting that out and kind of figuring out exactly what we want to do. We did go back to our design team and we started looking at different, you know, parking lot configurations. We spent like, for some of the parcels, we spent quite a bit of time trying to find a different solution, reconfiguring driveways, reconfiguring parking and things like that.
In partnership with the property owner or is it just from, from you?
Yeah, that would be in partnership with the property owner.
Okay, because the, so the thing that I struggle with is that we are getting to this point where we have to vote on something that will be, hopefully it will be, you know, an agreement will be made, you know, and as Kim mentioned, it's a process and we have to go to court at the end if there are no agreements made. I'd hate to vote on something where the, it could potentially go there where now a decision has to be forced on a property owner. So I was wondering if we can have a conversation, continue the conversations, property owners, you know, without having, you know, maybe we delay the decision we have to make right now, or what are the implications of delaying a decision if we have to?
Okay, yeah. So after, so after the condemnation ordinance is passed by council, there is a thirty-day period where we need to make contact with them and we need to make contact approximately, make three good faith efforts to make contact with them before we can file with the courts. And then after we file, file with the courts, it's a two-hundred-and-seventy-eight day period before they, they make a decision on it. So it's, it's quite a bit of time. And during that time, our first course of action would be to negotiate with them. That's, that's number one. We really want to try and reach something that's, everybody's on board with, the property owners, the city. And then we also have another option to prevent it, to going all the way to condemnation and that's a possession and use agreement. If they sign that, that means that they agree with, that the property need is necessary by the city. We agree that you need this property. We just have issues with the cost of the property or what the, just compensation is going to be. And at that point, it's my understanding that, you know, as long as we have that possession and use, we might not need to use condemnation at all. That it kind of extends that and gives us some more time because we can begin to, to construct the project and meet our obligation deadlines with the state funding agencies. Is there anything you want to add there, Kim?
Yeah, I understand the concern about, you know, maybe not wanting to pass it tonight and giving staff more time to talk with these owners. But we, we have brought this to council at a time that we think, we know, we can still negotiate with these owners, have good faith contact with the owners. Washdot is monitoring what the city is doing with the owners and requires that good faith effort to negotiate. So there is a big brother watching over our shoulder. We would do it anyways, but there is that. And then if that doesn't work out, you know, say within the next month or, or longer, then we do need to file the condemnation cases. That doesn't mean we go to trial right away. We get a case scheduled from King County and it's nine months out. Robert, Robert explained that, two-hundred-and-seventy days. And the only way we can absolutely require an owner to convey their property to the city is once a court or a jury decides how much we have to pay, city has to pay first, then we get the property. And that can be so far out that that's why we have brought this condemnation ordinance to council tonight. We will not use it right away. We will make good faith negotiations with these owners, but we do have to get started to keep the project on track. We do need to have this ordinance passed by council.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Kim. I appreciate that. I appreciate the answer, Robert. One more question. I know you mentioned we advertise in the Seattle Times and this other publication.
Journal Daily, Daily Commerce.
How many people read that?
Residents, I'm not sure many. That's something that I think a lot of contractors read that.
I mean, but, so my point is that we need to, I know you turned the thing on. We have to, I know there's legal requirements, but we probably need to do a little more than that.
Kim's got her hand back up. I think she's, it's the, it's required that we advertise in.
I get it.
Yeah, that's not the, that's not the primary way that we were communicating with, but it is a legally required way from state law. And I believe that the, the journalist lobby is very strong at keeping it that way.
And along with that, there was.
The required newspaper notice need to be fixed.
I'm glad we agree on, on that.
We did send out, like I mentioned, individual letters to each of the property owners as well. So there was direct contact with them.
Okay, did you get response from them?
There was no response needed. It was just an information.
An informational?
Yeah.
Is that the one you just said, Erin, the one you sent us an email about?
Yes, indeed. And, and why, we have some friends joining us this evening because they got those letters, I think.
Okay, yeah. I think, I, I mentioned this, but I'll mention, not because of the people here, but I, even in private, I mentioned, I think we can work on the, the words. I mean, there's legal requirements, I understand. I mean, the city attorney is looking at me, so I need to be careful what I say. But I, it's a joke for everybody. The, I, but I think we can, I think we can have things that, like this explanation we had here, the process we had, I think, would go a long way in, in just minimizing the, the temperature, lowering the temperature quite a bit because then people understand that some things need to happen as, in a city that's growing as fast as we are. And we just need to manage the process so that we, the impact will get minimized as much as we, as possible. But that's all. Thank you.
I think it's my turn. You know, I remember the first time I ran for city council, agreeing to do it, going home and talking to my wife and thinking, gosh, I can't wait until we get to talk about eminent domain. I really want to take my neighbor's land. Nobody screenshot that video. That probably wasn't, that probably wasn't a smart thing to say in a public meeting. That'll be. Thank you for, to everybody for coming here tonight and thank you for chuckling a little bit there as well. We're, we're all trying to get through this together and we acknowledge that this is just sort of inherently awkward and difficult. Couple of questions. Of, of the scope of the individual properties that are required, like how many like feet are we talking about total? Like obviously we have a certain amount of right of way and we need more. Like what does that look like?
Yeah, that's very parcel specific and specific to the specific location along the alignment. In general, I think last time we said about fourteen to twenty feet. It's kind of like the average.
And how much of that is for easement where the owner can still functionally use the land either through like, you mentioned the easement could cover parking at various points in time or some types of landscaping? Like, like is there going to be part of this where we are taking an easement, but it is still a usable piece of property for the property owner?
Definitely, definitely, especially the temporary construction easements, utility easements, things like that.
Okay, and the temporary, I think it was the deputy mayor was asking about those. Those we will kind of restore to the previous condition?
Yes.
Okay. After we're done there? And we mean that, right? Like we're not, like we, we do that and we do a good job?
Yes.
Perfect. I, Kim, I believe you answered this question earlier, but like I want to put just a little finer point on it and make sure that I heard you correctly. I know the funding for this property is pretty complicated and we've worked hard to get it from multiple different sources, sometimes multiple different times as costs have gone up over the last few years. It seems like if we, if we put this off tonight, we start to potentially put some of that funding stack and the project itself at risk. Is that a fair question?
That is taken into consideration. Yes, that's, I mean, that is part of why we are bringing it to you tonight.
Yeah, we're not here tonight because we don't need to do it right now. Like we're here tonight because we need to do it right now.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you to the rest of my colleagues. I had questions. I got to delete because you got to them. You know, as Councilmember Dodd mentioned, actually one other thing, you know, we've done this before as a city, like we've gone down this road. And condemnation or eminent domain is like the last option. None of us want to do that. Like we want to make property owners whole. We want this to be a decent experience and we want you to feel respected and valued by the city. We're not here tonight voting on this saying, we're going to take it. Like we're, we're voting on this tonight because procedurally it's something we need to do and it's not the end of the conversation. And it's not the end of us making sure that this is as good of an experience as possible for you. And, and I say that having gone through a couple of these things. Nobody wants to use the court process. Like we want this to work and to work well for everybody. I think that's all I've got. Yes, Councilmember Dodd?
Thanks. Much like you, I had a question that came up from everybody else's comments. So I'm wondering with the, with things like the stormwater and, and stream easements, do we tell property owners what's okay on those bits of land that we will kind of, you know, have to jump in and maybe empty or maintain or whatever it is? Like I imagine it's like, well, can I do this? Can I do that? Can get exhausting? Do we give people a list of like, here's what you can do here, you know, please don't pave it, but here's trees and things or plantings that you can add?
I haven't personally been through the process, but it's definitely something we can do. I'm not sure if it has been done in the past, but it definitely can be done.
It feels neighborly, but I want to respect that you do this every day and I'm just putting myself in the shoes of someone who might get one of those letters.
Yeah.
So, cool. Thank you.
Councilwoman Burdick, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to add a point about the other time, because the, the roundabout, actually it was something where it was, I was comfortable with moving forward with because we did have the conversations with the property owners and we, it was a decision way before the timelines and the deadlines we had to hit. So that was actually, we had a good outcome with that one. I hope that we can have a similar outcome in this, in this, in this process.
I was just going to add that if any property owners are along Bothell Way, are curious to see what the outcome of this process can look like, go visit the roundabout on 240th at Meridian. There were several properties where acquisition did have to occur in slices and the maps looked very, you know, similar to what you're seeing or possibly facing with your property. And by working with those property owners, we were able to make, make a road safer for our community. And so you can sort of see what's possible when community members work together with the city to build a public good that we all benefit from. And please also, you know, I, I would hope that staff would make available to the public all of the planning information that has been shared with the community over the last couple of years with like the open house, that you would be able to revisit that information and see, you know, what, what the process, what the plan, what the project really is. And then be able to look specifically at, at your, at your property and know how that would affect you. So I really appreciate staff for all of their thoroughness and care and respect for our community members. And so please know that, that you deserve to be heard and that our staff is eager to hear, hear you and work with you. So thank you.
I'll just jump in with a quick comment. I just wanted to expand on what the mayor said, that we want you to feel valued. Just carry it a step further and say, you are valued. And you coming before us and making your message clear, stick to it, talk us, talk us through it because you are valued. And I want to give you permission that when this is all said and done, you can gloat about being able to step out at your front door and get on a bus that's going to take you up to Payne Airfield while the rest of us have to find parking or someone who will take us, take us to the airport. Because my hope and prayer is that this ends up being an asset for you and a blessing to you as well.
Councilwoman Zornz, you totally stole my thunder. That was going to be the thing I was going to say at the end. Like the reason we're doing this is because, or one of the reasons we're doing this is because community transit is going to bring the Swift Green Line down right along the frontage. So you guys are going to have like very regular bus rapid transit on your front door after this, which I am totally jealous of. And I acknowledge, like that doesn't mean that this isn't awkward. That doesn't mean that this isn't difficult. I'm not trying to gloss over very real concerns by saying there's going to be a bus someday, but it's going to be a cool bus at the same time. With that, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Dodd?
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the acquisition by eminent domain if needed of property necessary for the Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvements Project.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from the Deputy Mayor. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Dodd?
I will be voting yes with the understanding that the potential for condemnation is a last resort. Regular viewers and attendees know I love a metaphor and the, but I couldn't think of a pineapple pizza one this time. The, the one I thought of is kind of the game mousetrap or Rube Goldberg device, however you think of it, where this is something that's going to drop what feels early. And at the very end, if we need it to get to the finish line, it'll be there. But hopefully because our staff is just this good, it's not something we need to utilize to get to the finish line here. But I want to acknowledge that it's not about trying to take, it's about having this piece in place in the right time of the process so that the giant public good project does get done.
Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank community for coming out and sharing feedback tonight. This is one of those items I think we vote on as council and I'll tell you like this is the very bottom of my list of things that I enjoy doing. I think taxes I thought was going to be at the bottom, but property acquisition from residents that are not looking to sell is below that. Never feels great to, to give up property, even if you're compensated for it, when you're not looking to sell. So I just don't want that to be lost. I want you to know that staff does care. Staff does want to work with each and every property owner to make it the best that they possibly can out of a not great situation. They've done a lot of work already to, as I've talked about tonight, to try to minimize that by moving around elements of the project, shrinking lane sizes, things like that. And I, I think that is a start, but there. And I, I think that is a start, but there will be more conversation to come. Please don't stop giving feedback. Please don't stop sharing along in the process because we do want to hear and staff doesn't want to hear where you're at as this goes along. So I will be supporting tonight this project because it is one of those things that we, as a city, do need to be moved forward with as we continue to grow. We're expecting another 30,000 people in this town in the next 20 years. And this unfortunately is the main arterial through our city going north, south outside of 405. And we do need that bus rapid transit service to connect with other bus rapid transit services that's currently serving our downtown, making it a better connection, making it safe for people to take other modes of transportation as well, whether that be walking, biking, skating, and other, other multimodal transportation. So as much as I really, really don't like to do this, and I don't like the idea of condemnation at all, runs counter to my, my beliefs, but I'm hoping we don't get there with any property owner. But it is a, a tool, as, as the attorney said, to be used in cases where we absolutely have to do that. So again, thank you for coming out and sharing your feedback and nobody up here takes this action lightly.
And also I just want to point out that, you know, you've heard multiple council members say that we don't want to use this, that we value you and we want you to feel valued throughout the process. And I promise you, if our staff didn't know that already, they heard it loud and clear tonight. So we hope that these conversations go well. And in the past, we've been able to avoid using this tool and I hope we're able to do that again this time too. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right. And with that, now if you guys want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, all you have to do is wait an hour for us to get out of executive session and then you can hear us talk about some other scintillating topics. But right now it's 7:25. We're going to take a 10 minute break and we're going to resume the meeting in executive session at 7:35. Nope?
Mayor, we'll need to announce when, when we'll be coming back from exec session?
All right, we will be coming back from executive session at 8:35 PM. Thank you. Welcome back from executive session. It is 8:35 PM. And council is going to add an action item under the ordinances and resolutions section of the agenda. And with that, we are going to move on to our city manager reports. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Before we get started, we do have one, one staff report update. It's our quarterly financial review. I do want to just address council briefly. With, in the interest of time, we do have several additional items on the agenda tonight, including two study sessions. The, the study sessions, we've projected to take up to 90 minutes total. If council is, is interested, we can, we can hold on, we've, we've put them in order of where there might be, like where perceived interest of, the first one is a council priority, so prioritize. The second one on building code updates is timely but not urgent. So we could move that to the first meeting in October if council would like to. And again, you can make that decision later, but I wanted to just present it while we have staff in the room. If you would like to shorten the agenda by one item, we can, we can adjust.
How, what does that October meeting look like? Are we going to run ourselves into the same situation in October?
The city clerk will be able to, to load balance. We can, we can make it work. We have, we have more, we have more time than we do tonight for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. If we have more time than we do tonight?
Do you want to motion?
No, we'll just, just kick the last one off.
All right. Thank you. So team, thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate your patience and we'll see you again. We'll, we'll make sure that that works for you. We'll, we'll get all that figured out. Thank you.
We'll look forward to a lot of excitement in October talking about the building codes. I'm actually really excited to talk about the building codes. Like I'm not, I mean, I was joking, but like you're warning I care.
That's right. No, that's why we know it might not be a short conversation. So as we, as we do move forward, tonight we are getting a presentation on, for financial updates of the first six months. And I do recognize we're in the third quarter of the year, almost to the fourth quarter of the year, but the, the, the funds come in and it takes time. So we're pleased to provide an update. Here with us tonight is Kwan Wong, our finance director, and he is joined by Miles Walker, newly promoted finance manager. I'll turn it over to the team.
Evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and City Council. It's good to be back and we're going to go over some second quarter budget updates for you. There's no action required tonight. We're just presenting this report to you. Everything I'm going to walk you through tonight is for data through June 30th of this year. So nothing in July, August or up to this month. So just keep that in mind as you look through all of that. We are 25% of the way through the biennium. So we'd expect revenues and expenditures to be roughly that 25% mark. So just keep that in mind as well as I go through all these numbers. This is just an overview of all city funds together restricted and unrestricted. And just looking at how the revenues and expenditures have come in so far. The green is going to be the actuals we've received so far or spent so far compared to the blue is what we would have projected them to be at so far. And as you can see, revenues are mostly in line with projections, coming in a little bit under projections and expenditures are quite a bit below what we would project and we'll get into the reasons why on the next slide. So here are the same citywide city expenditures, just broken down by some fund groups. So first off, general fund, the expenditures are a little bit under what we would expect throughout the year, which is almost entirely due to salary savings from vacant positions that we have jobs posted, people leave. It's a, you know, rotating process. So we can fill these positions at any point and we're actively recruiting, but that's, that's why we're a little under so far. The street and arterial street funds are both a little bit under where we'd expect, mostly due to capital projects, which will be a trend you'll find throughout the rest of the slide as well. Capital projects are not linear. Do not come in invoices steadily throughout the year and will often go through a bunch of design work that does not cost as much as construction and then get hit with big construction invoices later in the year or in the biennium. So this isn't anything we wouldn't expect as well. Same story with the park cumulative reserve fund. It's, there's some capital projects budgeted in there and there just hasn't been as much activity as we expected so far. Same thing as the capital improvements. There's a pretty big difference there, which has been speeding up in the following months. So the data from July and August, we've seen quite a bit of a pace increase as we'd expect. So this will definitely catch up as the biennium moves on. The asset replacement fund, again, we have not been replacing as many assets as we would have predicted, but that has been picking up in the months after this report. So we expect that to catch up throughout the biennium as well. Other governmental funds, which is just a big combination of a bunch of smaller funds are all looking exactly where we'd expect. And lastly, all the utilities here, water sewer and storm and surface are all quite a bit under where we'd expect. And that is also mostly due to capital spending not being linear. Moving on to general funds specifically, just a little bit more of a deeper dive into general fund. So far revenues have come in almost exactly where we'd want them to. So that's a really good thing. And expenditures are a little bit under, again, due to salary savings. Some factors we're going to continue to watch for throughout the rest of the biennium is inflation and federal funding. Those are two things that are top of mind as we continue through the biennium. But so far what we're seeing here is encouraging. Diving into the major revenues for general fund, property tax is very steady, comes in exactly where we'd expect. Sales tax is the only thing I think in this slide that is giving us a little, ears are perking up maybe. We're not quite worried yet, but it's staying flat compared to last year, whereas we projected a little increase. That said, only 25% of the way through the biennium, sales tax is very circular and it rotates a lot throughout the, the year. So nothing is worrying us yet, but we're just sort of aware of this trend and we're going to keep monitoring that throughout the rest of the biennium. Otherwise, business, utility taxes, franchise fees and permits, charges for services, all are coming in mostly a little bit over the projections, but very close, as well as fines and forfeitures and other miscellaneous sort of everything else is coming in just as we'd expect. So overall, nothing concerning here. And that wraps it up for the presentation, but happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Zornz?
A quick question and it's a trivia question. Is it a typical pattern for sales tax to be down in June and then jump as we approach the end of the year? I'm just thinking after the holidays, is spending, does it tend to stay, tend to stay down through June?
Not necessarily. December is normally the biggest month of the year following the holidays, but there's not like any other month that's very consistent. So it follows trends in the economy as well. So as inflation is higher or if consumer sentiment is down, sometimes we'll see sales tax slow down a little bit.
True, that, that would make a difference. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar type of question. When you're forecasting things like sales tax, do you take a total forecast for the year and just divide by 12? Or do you look at like last year in June compared to this year in June?
That was just the number divided by 12.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. This is, this is good. So you mentioned that the general fund, there's a 3 million gap between the projected 41 versus 38 million, the expenditures, correct? So you mentioned that that's because, you know, vacancies and all that stuff. I mean, that's a lot of vacancies, it seems like, unless there are a couple of high paid employees, you know, which I, I don't, I don't, I doubt it. The question is, how is that, does that affect city projects and things that the city needs to do, given that we don't have the staffing needed to do the work?
So, so let me jump in. If you recall, last year in the biennium budget process, we added quite a few number of employees. And again, because of the number of vacancies, it is a longer process than we expected to fill those. So I think I'm confident to say that most of the vacancies are due to the new positions that we created.
Okay, well, but projects were planned with those positions in mind. So is that, means things are getting delayed or?
I think we, again, in any situation, we will prioritize what we need in order to accomplish. So, and you, you may be right, there are projects out there or tasks that may be delayed because of the vacancies. But I think overall that we are seeing newer employees almost like every week, including my department. So again, we are doing catch up and again, I thank all those current employees who are filling the gaps.
And Deputy Mayor, it's, it's a great question. It is something that Kwan keeps me updated on as well internally and something that we'll be discussing at ELT. I think there definitely the new positions is part of it, although we did presume, I think we, I think we knocked a quarter off knowing that on average, some of those positions would be hired sooner and some would be later. So we, we try and factor that in. But you'll also, I think your, your data point that connects with that too, is that when you look at overall expenditures being lower, there are some implications of it's not just staff time, it's the projects that the people are working on. So it is, it's something we work on and I think as we, again, continue to fine tune our revenue or our projections, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, it's something we're trying to dig, dig into to learn a little bit better.
Cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation and questions that you've received. And so I don't have any further questions, but really do appreciate the update. Thank you.
I appreciate the fact that there's an update that I don't have any questions about. So thank you for coming here and letting us know that things are going just like what we would expect them to. We appreciate it. Oh, yeah.
Sorry to double dip after the mayor. I know mayor patiently, patiently waits to speak and then I'm the last. I wanted to also thank you. This has been something that we've been requesting, having those updates, financial updates regularly. So we'll have those conversations. So thank you for, for doing this.
Thank you, council. That completes the city manager report.
All right. In that case, we are going to move on to projected agenda discussion. Seeing none, I would love a motion to Councilmember Curd.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Curd and a second from Councilmember Alderks. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd is not here. Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
You ready to go fast on this one too? Consent agenda, motion, anybody? Oh, we did, we didn't do projected.
I know.
It's probably a good thing we put the last study session off. All right, we have done the nine ordinances and resolutions. So I believe next up we have appointments, 10A to Joint Fire and Medical Advisory Board. City Manager Standard?
Yeah, I think, I think if council is okay, I think this is out of order, but I think it's a better order. So we'll, after this, we'll go back to the added item that, that's not your script.
Yes.
But I think we can take up appointments if council is supportive. Council, as you recall, we have an interlocal agreement with Fire District 10. One of the requirements in that agreement that's been requested is annually we hold a joint meeting. There are four appointed individuals, two, two from Fire District 10, two from the Bothell City Council. In, in the past, over the, like, there was two or three years there where we had a public safety committee where the two representatives came from that with the past year not having that committee in place. We're looking to the full council to see who would be available to, to be part of this meeting. Information's in the packet of when we are anticipating the meeting and then it'll be confirmed. One of the things that is suggested with your motion is we would look to have two individuals appointed and then maybe one alternate because life happens. In addition, I just do want to note that the city clerk has tracked this question as something that we'll, we can talk about next year when you open up the protocol manual in the first of the year of looking at, in terms of community appointments, you'd have the option of just picking this straight up in the beginning of the year because it does happen every September. Or if you want to revisit the public safety committee, revert back to the past practice as well. So that's the information I have for you and otherwise we'd be looking for volunteers. Again, no need for a motion and a vote unless all of you are clamoring to do it. As long as we have concurrence of who the representatives are, we'll be satisfied and Laura will follow up with Fire District 10 staff.
Councilmember Curd?
Thanks. I'm available that day if needed.
Our newest Snohomie. Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I've represented in the past three years. Happy to do it again if, if others are not available. I do know that I'll be traveling that day and I haven't had my plane ticket booked and there's one flight that gets back in time. So depending upon that flight booking, I may not be able to make it. So just throwing it out there that I would like to do it. I'm available potentially, but if there's somebody else that is definitely available, I won't stand in their way and I'm happy to be an alternate.
Councilmember Dodd, you have served on this in the past and are one of the resident Snohomies. Is this something you're interested in serving on again on October 16th at 3:30 PM?
Probably, but I have a maybe commitment. So perhaps Councilmember Manke and I can do rock, paper, scissors as it gets closer?
I think we've got enough.
Okay.
We have a Councilmember Curd and one of y'all. Staff can follow up on that.
Thank you, yeah.
We just don't know which one is the alternate, but we'll figure it out.
I think we have enough to work from.
Cool.
I think rock, paper, scissors was already formally introduced.
Yeah.
Is that already in BMC? Are we good there?
I think we call it RPS in, in the BMC.
So Mayor, I think then what we will do, the next item of the agenda will be moving backwards, as you will, to ordinances and resolutions to the item that was added following the executive session. the executive session. I do have materials to distribute briefly to Council members, and then we'll join at the, at the, at the table for a presentation. Staff will, so if you give us a moment to transport, we'll, we'll be there.
A moment is just fine.
Doesn't print well. All right, Council, are we waiting? We lost two.
We are down two. I think we are, we have some that are taking a quick break.
That's fine. Would you like to take a pause, or would you like me to?
We can just take a quick pause. Can we just hang out here for a couple of minutes and have a public meeting with awkward silence in it? Cool.
Best part of my day.
We're going to be back here at 9:00. We're going to take a five-minute break. All right, welcome back. I'm going to kick it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. We do have an item that was not previously scheduled on, on the agenda. Full information and options that we're discussing tonight will be part of the record, I just want to assure anybody who's watching. The item we're adding is for the City Council to consider options related to what's being presented as a First Amendment and Restated Grant Agreement for the Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvements Project. Tonight with you, I am Kyle Stannard, the City Manager for Bothell. I'm joined tonight by Aaron Lenhart, the Public Works Director, and Kwan Wong, the Finance Director. We will do our best to answer any questions you have. We just got a financial report, and anytime we talk about budget, which is, again, oftentimes the most significant policy, maybe minus tonight, that the Council considers every two years, one of the things that I always frame on that is that the budget is a fiscal plan, and we, we developed that budget informed by many things, including the Council vision, the comprehensive plan is an informant piece of that, and as well as the capital facilities plan, all ties together. Our fiscal strategy in Bothell has been historically successful and, and really a great asset to the community in that we look for a doubling effect for our capital projects. So every dollar that Bothell puts in, we look for matching funds. And so with that, our budget contains lots of funding from other sources, but primarily the federal government. You'll see that within the capital facilities plan specifically. Tonight, Council is being asked to consider options related to a requested amendment to funding agreements related to the Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvement Project, which we previously heard about tonight about property acquisition. By way of background, this project serves as a critical capacity project for the region, not just Bothell, and it connects State Route 522 and Interstate 405, crossing through both Snohomish and King Counties. A core piece of this project, this is support transit service, which we have discussed tonight, specifically bus rapid transit operated by community transit, as well as providing pedestrian and bicycle facilities to create safer and more reliable means of travel through Bothell. Funding this project has been a significant focus of Bothell, for the, for the city over the past several years. And the previously awarded funding that we talked about, that matching funding we bring in includes a $19 million rebuilding American infrastructure and with sustainable equity grant, often referred to in this very room as a RACE grant, as well as $10.5 million in Surface Transportation Block Grants, or STBG grants, for right-of-way funds from the Washington State Department of Transportation, which are contingent on funding from the federal government. So there's a relationship between that 19 million and that 10 and a half. The issue that we're facing tonight is there's an amendment that has been, or amendments that have come in for the disagreement that is required for signature for the city, which includes language creating legal uncertainty, and that's what we're facing. The included language reflects, is reflective of presidentially issued executive orders, and while executive orders are historically pointed to administration of federal agencies, the inclusion of language in this agreement, and we suspect additional agreements that we will see and have seen, is, is an equivalent of the city being told to, to follow them as well. That opens up questions of, is that applicable? Is that, does it have legal standing? How would it be enforced? And who would be interpreting success? In addition, what, one of the things that is an issue for us as well is just recognition of the completion of the Bothell Way project is a significant strategic asset for this community, and that ties back to some of the expectations that are placed on us at the state of Washington level related to growth requirements and things that we've tied into our comprehensive plan that have been tested and measured to make sure that we are preparing this community for the growth, the growth we anticipate, to meet that vision that's articulated in the Council vision, but then also reinforced in the comprehensive plan. It's what we point to. But those state requirements, again, anything that we, that we have without this Bothell Way multimodal project and the transportation options that it provides, realistically, we either risk being out of compliance or having to go back and redo this work that's, you know, that was pretty significantly monumental. So what specifically is the city being asked to do? Well, the requested amendment that we've received is related to, again, the multimodal RACE grant, which was awarded in the fiscal year '22 federal budget in the term sheet. The, what, what spurred this on is, as Council is aware, some of the funds that were, we were looking to in the state budget, state budget was bleak this year, and so the legislature in trying to balance everything moved funding for this project out to the '27-'29 biennium, which we were anticipating for '25-'26. So the city's intent was to reallocate $4 million from the construction phase from the federal funding into the right-of-way acquisition phase, that then we could then also allocate the commiserate $4 million. Hopefully, the state would deliver in '27-'29 to fill that gap. So we're looking at trading. With that, that request, staff have been told that the Federal Highway Administration will not release any funds on the project until a RACE amendment is signed. So we are now tripped into, even if we said, never mind, we're not going to do it, it's been, this project has been flagged, and the funds allocated in '22 are being flagged as we need a city-signed amendment. And in that amendment is where there is some language that, again, the applicability is, is questionable. In addition, state funds in the form of the Surface Transportation Block Grants that I mentioned previously, again, would not be obligated if the RACE grant goes away. So if we don't amend the RACE grant, RACE grant money goes away, and the state funding would also. So it creates a double hit. So as we start contemplating some recommendations for Council to consider tonight, what we wanted to note is that these requests have been coming in very quickly over the last few weeks. This hasn't been something that's been brewing for six months or so. It's in a matter of weeks. And in that time, city staff have been pursuing as many options as we can, including concerning legal options, as well as, as, as policy and, and other options we can to essentially preserve the federal funding that has already been awarded to us while also complying with applicable laws. Within that compliance, one of the things we are facing, as I mentioned, in that uncertainty is confusion and conflicting guidance within federal laws themselves of congressionally passed laws and what is required with then executive orders as well, and also making sure that we continue to comply with state laws. You have probably seen in the news, there are various efforts in the courts to clarify this, this conflicting direction, and how does executive orders apply in this case? And we'll, we will expect to see some of those conversations coming up in Congress as well, as congressional delegation looks at whose role is which. So the, we're seeing nationally, this isn't just a Bothell issue, of looking for clarity through Congress and through the courts. As that happens, the staff have been working very closely with representatives and their staff from our federal delegation, as well as communicating through our state, our state agency contacts to really look at everything we can do to safeguard this funding into the 2026 biennium of the, the next federal budget. In addition, staff have been working with the Governor's Office and the State Attorney General's Office, and of course, Washington State Department of Transportation as well. So we're pursuing every option, and what we're being told is, in terms of the timeline, is this federal grant, which again, then ties to a state grant, we need to sign by the end of this fiscal year, which is September 30th. So that's kind of setting the stage. So before you tonight, Council have prepared a series of options. There's three resolutions and then a motion, and I'm going to cover them all. Things are color-coded for Council so that we can all literally speak from the same page. So the golden rod version, which should be at the top of your pile, but if you've shuffled it, so look for the golden rod one. Again, they're all titled similarly, similarly. But what this resolution would do is it authorizes the signature of the First Amendment and Restated Grant Agreement for Bothell Way, so that would, we would be signing off on the requested agreement. It also provides, in the resolution, provides direction to staff to explore litigation options, which would include joining existing litigation, again, pursuing legal clarity, but also considering new litigation, or consider joining new litigation as it becomes available. The anticipation in this is that there are several efforts that are multi-jurisdictional. We would be looking there first. This is staff's recommendation before you tonight, and we would be, part of the reason that we'd be looking at it is it keeps the commitment of funding that we are expecting from the federal government. It keeps it viable while also seeking the necessary legal and policy options to ensure that we are in good stead with, with our state legal requirements, Council vision, values, et cetera. The second option we'll highlight is yellow, so the yellow page, another resolution. It's similar to the second, to the, to the previous option in that it would direct staff to sign off on the amendment, but it would not contain a litigation approach. In this case, we would continue to work with our delegation and for policy clarification through Congress, but it wouldn't have a legal, a legal arm to it. While staff's intent would be to comply with requirements as we can, there is, again, the ambiguity of what it looks like and how the federal government would monitor and enforce the requirements that we'd be signing off on. So there's a lot of question to that that would be unresolved if Congress isn't able to do things. So basically, we're, we're putting ourselves in the standpoint of saying, we'll sign on, and we'll see what happens. The purple option, the final resolution before you tonight, would take a different approach, which in this case, it would direct staff to deny signature of the Restated Grant Agreement from fiscal year 2022. We would continue to focus on preserving the STBG funds from the state that have already been awarded to this project. But again, there's no, everything we're being told by WashDOT right now is that without the federal funds, that isn't going to be possible. But again, we wouldn't stop trying. We would, it had a, if, if unsuccessful, and even, even if it was to preserve that portion of the money, it clearly would have a significant impact on our ability to complete the work and certainly delay progress on the project. In addition, we would intend, even with this option of not signing, to seek if there are any legal options to, again, try and put protection around the funds that we're counting on and were awarded. The final option before you, and then we'll pause and see if there's any questions, would be simply a motion. And in this case, what we recognize is this is a lot of new information in front of you, and sometimes the best anecdote, or anecdote for information is time. So while we, there are five Tuesdays in the month of September, so we have a little time before the end of the month. In this case, what we would be looking for is for Council to call a special meeting. We were proposing on next Tuesday, but the date and time is really up to Council. We'll be, we'll, we'll have some assembly of staff to handle this. I will be here, and it will, you could consider these options or direct us to, to gather more information. In that motion, we would also ask that, that staff would direct, or staff would be directed to pursue litigation options. There are some, some current, current litigation in the works that's already, already in process that we have a potential option to join, but we would need to do so quickly. That's within the City Manager's purview to do anyway, but again, we operate with the spirit of no surprises, and so certainly want to put that in front of you tonight. You know, overall, I will just say that, again, no matter which path we take, staff is committed to continuing to monitor any agreement that we get. We read them, we look for details, and we will flag things that are concerning. We also know that no matter what path we take here tonight, there is some risk to the funding that we have been counting on. And so just to, to answer one potential question, too, that is secondary to the decision of what path to take, if this funding goes away, we will certainly be back to Council to talk about how, what, what do we do next? Are there rebalancing, reprioritizations of the current budget, including capital facilities plan, as well as if we do need to revisit and do a comprehensive plan amendment, or potentially consider things like our state legislative agenda so that some of the requirements that we are under for hitting growth targets, I have a feeling we won't be the only city in this predicament, so maybe the state legislature wants to consider those timelines. But those are all decisions that we have a little bit more time on. I think the, the timeliness decision for us tonight is if we, if we want to take action to attempt to preserve the, the RACE grant funding, there's a couple of strategies that we would have to put in place by September 30th. So with that, I'm going to pause. Happy to talk through any of these options in more detail, and then, as I mentioned, we do have our subject matter experts from, from finance and public works available to help put things in context as well. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. It doesn't seem like we have a chatty groove up here. I am comfortable with the staff recommendation.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes.
A motion to approve a resolution of the City Council authorizing the City Manager to execute first amended and restated grant agreement for the Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvements Project in his official capacity.
And for clarity, I believe that you're referring to the golden rod version, just for, making sure we have seven people all following.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilmember Aldrichs and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the option. I realize that this is, I mean, we talk about the, the least of the evils that we have right now, but I don't still, I don't feel like these amendments would, I mean, it benefits the, the greater good of the roadway, and we're still not even guaranteed, I don't think, that we'll get the funds even if we sign on. So I, I feel like from a values standpoint, that might actually tell our residents, send a message that doesn't truly align with, with the values. So I don't, I don't think I'll be supporting this, but, but I just wanted to state this.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate the, the reason behind your comments and your vote. Given that this is a multimodal project, that we're taking the bus that gets us closest to where we need to be, and it is not perfect, nor is it, I think, the solution anybody in this room wanted us to have to take. I will be voting yes to get us as close as we can get to where we wanted to be. I will be voting yes to get us as close as we can get to where we want it to be, and particularly interested in updates on Section 2. Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the motion, mainly because I am, Section 1 specifically is very troubling as a city with the rights that belong to us as local decision makers and wanting to retain those rights. But I am comforted that there can be arguments on our behalf to support the actions and values that we state and hold dear in our community. And that is the only way I am comforted that this is a possibility for me to support. And so I appreciate staff exploring those litigation options, and I look forward to updates that might provide us protection in the future so that we can continue operating according to our values here in our community. Thank you.
City Clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Orange?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson? Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
No.
Passes 6-1 with Deputy Mayor Alcabra dissenting.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have a study session. Do we want to take five before the study session, or have we? Okay, we're doing, yes. So we're going to take five. It is 9:20. We will be back at 9:25.
Recording in progress.
We've got a study session. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And council, we have one item remaining tonight, and it is to follow up on parking enforcement as previously mentioned. Tonight, we are seeking direction on implementation of downtown parking enforcement, and essentially, just to put a finer point on this, is that this relates back to one of your council priorities. And so as we start taking action to implement, we really just want to confirm that we are on the right track. And specifically, there's multiple phases that you'll see tonight, but the first phase is really predicated on exactly how you want to see us take the first step. Specifically, I'll just point you to this, is that currently, we'll talk about what are the current codes on the books, and what do they say that we will do with parking? And is that the parking enforcement you want us to do? Or do you want us to bring back some code changes along with this? So we can do both. It doesn't add time. It's just, again, what is the scope? As mentioned, within the council vision in moving in and around Bothell, the specific request was to develop strategies to better manage parking, to enhance parking availability. So that's what we're looking for. There were some modifier subbullets about willingness of charged parking and that sort of thing. So again, we're looking to scope of not just strategies, but making sure that we have the right strategy. Tonight, the questions that are going to be before you are here, and at this point, I'm going to turn things over. I will note, we have a pretty large team of staff who have been supporting this effort because it does touch multiple departments. And I'm really also grateful to Ashish Joshi, our Economic Development Coordinator, who I think, both in the proximity of being in the executive office and being willing, but also his connection to businesses in downtown. I really appreciated his leadership on this effort to make sure that as we start moving forward with solutions, somebody who is already out about and walking around and talking to business owners will be able to get their perspective. With that all being said, I'm going to turn things over to Ashish to lead through the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. So here we have questions for consideration covering alignment, code usage. Also, anything, are we missing anything? And is there anything we should avoid in the work going forward? Centering back at our priority, we mentioned both management and enforcement, so just wanting to center that management can include enforcement, but not the other way around. And separately, they have differing goals and intents, so just want to keep that at the head as we move forward. Looking at where we are currently, we have two areas of code that are primarily tied to this, both designed and with the intent from the 1990s and had subsequent updates to tweak down the line, both on the where and also on the penalty tied to them as well. Along with this is the code tied to residential parking as well, which is from the similar time. And then through this work, we took an initial look at where our on-street parking is downtown. So this is initial look of some of the spots throughout our downtown area, 374 total, and multiple zones applied to them in different areas as well. And with all that, we wanted to compare ourselves to our neighbors. We saw that whether it's downtown in Redmond, Kirkland, there were some similarities and some differences and some lessons that we can learn as we all, all our cities go through similar processes. And then Shoreline definitely had parallels on the neighborhood side as their beginning neighbor enforcement. So taking that all together, we're looking at a phased approach. So here you'll see Phase 1, leading to the second quarter of next year. And simultaneously with all this is our downtown subarea plan update. And some of that engagement during that process is going to look at some of the high level elements of parking, such as what people use, what people will use parking for, and some of the general dynamics on a high level. And then that will support some of our work going forward in future phases, such as the parking plan. And also after that is the incorporation of publicly available parking, such as City Hall, which is one we control, and others that we don't control, such as King County Parking Ride and other cases like that. So in total, it's the, as we start work, there's going to be knock-on effects, and so we want to be able to mitigate and track them as they go on. So looking at our next steps, so we want to be able to come back to you with a model and iterate from that. And included in that model is cost and cost recovery is a key element there. And then with the iteration, we want to make sure that we connect with our community in multiple ways. So I mentioned earlier, the downtown subarea plan looks at the high level elements of parking in our downtown, but the more ground level work will start later on as well. So I wanted to thank you all for the patience through a long night, and also we want to hear your feedback and get your direction with these questions. So thank you all again, and happy to hear your questions.
I'll just jump in, and my initial thoughts, this is still at the ground planning level where input can go in. I guess one question, when it gets to the point about having paid parking, is, can there be research done on are the time limits being respected generally? So if the time limits are being respected, paid parking might be a moot point. And then the other consideration, and I'm sure the chief would be voicing in on this, is that if we're enforcing it, who is doing the enforcement? And how is that going to be funded? Because I know that right now, our police are busy answering calls, have a hard time enforcing the parking that we've got going on right now. So if it stays within the police department, how are we going to support them so that they can do this job effectively? And, you know, if we're going to take that off the police department's shoulders, how, you know, and I'm sure that's the options that you're going to be coming up with, is who's going to be enforcing it and what's the cost on it? So those are my only immediate thoughts on it.
That's great feedback, and for sure. In terms of the who, I think some of the feedback from tonight will really help crystallize which options we pursue. We, our intent is to look to have a program that is as close to cost neutral as possible. But again, when we bring back, we're going to go do RFPs and that sort of thing. When we bring things back, we'll be able to prove whether or not that's true. But then also, based on the volume of what is being enforced, is going to be one of the things that predicates what level of staffing. So for example, of like the current, at the current model, it may make sense to really just have more like one or two people who are going around every once in a while. If it goes to paid parking, like an hour free, and then after that it costs, then you've got a little bit of higher volume to be enforcing. So those are things that we'll pursue. And I think also, as we look for the technology that supports this, because that is a piece of it, is that we don't have the tools to do it, let alone the resources that I think we'll learn a lot more on the way, too. So yeah, definitely when we come back, we'll have better analysis.
Well, I'm looking forward to all the viable avenues and hearing what those are.
Thanks for bringing this back. I know, like, it's been pretty quick, I think, governmentally, but it feels like it's here. I am really open to sort of data-based, as far as like, is the first hour free? Like, when do we charge? What hours do we charge under? I think that's something that we can't decide through anecdotes, because I have people who say they can never find parking downtown. I always find parking downtown. The truth is somewhere in the middle of that. I can't have all the luck in this, so I think, you know, it just depends on lots of factors. I am really pretty passionate, though, that we need people who work for the city doing enforcement. I don't want an agency that makes their money off of what we pay them versus what they pay their employees. And I would like it to be people who are sort of signing up for a long-term job in our community, not sort of here while their agency employs them to do it. So I think for me, I wouldn't be able to support a plan that doesn't use city of Bothell employees. Yeah, thank you.
Since we're discussing, I like that, actually. You made me, because I was thinking, you know what? We talk about cost, this, cost, that. If you do a public-private partnership, you really do a rev share and you don't have, but then if the requirement is to have somebody, somebody who feels like as part of the Bothell community, actually, that makes a lot of sense, you know, to have them be part of the community. But we can, maybe there's a hybrid solution there somewhere, where it could be a public-private partnership, but with a city employee type thing, you know, or somebody who's part of the Bothell community. I like that.
I have a couple of questions. This is something, big picture, that I'd like to do so people have a better experience coming into Bothell, but there's also a piece of it that's just having something in place ready for the future so that if things do change, that we can react to it, and we can make sure that our community, when they want to come downtown, that like they can have a place to park. I would love to know if there was a way to put a system in place that gives us data on those open spots so that we know, like, at any point in time, how many spots are available? And we can say at this time of day, these spots are available. I don't know if that's like a sensor and 300 and however many spots that reports back, but something that we can monitor over time and say, hey, like, you know, this year, here is like what we're seeing in terms of parking availability. And if down the road, we get to a place where, and I mean, I have a similar experience to Councilmember Dodd, like, I don't, I never have problems finding parking in Bothell. Like, I usually just park at either City Hall or the Parking Ride, and that's like two blocks from everywhere in the city. But, so we can know, like, here's how many spots are available, like, and if there is a time, like, I would love to know, honestly, to see if enforcement is even necessary. Like, because if we knew, like, you know, there's not a time when you can't find parking in Bothell, and here is the data to prove it, like, then we really don't have a problem we need to spend money on enforcing. But that also gives us the ability to be proactive down the road. If we see a problem coming down the road, and we're like, hey, like, in this area, like, all of a sudden, like, there's not parking, you know, at these times, at these dates, things like that, like, then we can say, hey, like, we'd love to, you know, we obviously need to do something different because we're not getting the results we need. So I guess that's my first question, is, is that a thing? Is that real? Like, is that something that exists that we know about?
Yeah, so there are kind of two very popular technologies that try to get toward that. One is kind of like an aerial base, and it gets more toward the probability. So you'll have a 50% chance of this space being open. And then there's the example, like you mentioned, like a sensor that would be in every spot, and then you can measure the sensors. There's different elements that are tied to that, especially with the weather that we have here. So that's something that we'll look into a little more, but those are kind of the two most popular examples of those.
And I think the other thing we'd want to look at with that in mind is, it's possible then of implementing, finding an enforcement solution for the codes that are already in the books, could be part of that scope of like, because again, it's not paid parking, it's if you're not, if you're violating 15 minutes, one hour, two hour, there's an infraction. But as people are monitoring for that, we could get a non-technical hand count at times, too. So we could, we could, we could make that be part of the role is to, as a pilot, and over the first year, see what it shows us.
Big picture, what I would like to see is, I would like to see like the least that we have to do, both as a city and that we expect our residents to do, to make sure that like, there's a parking spot available within a couple of blocks. Have we done, and when we did this inventory, did we do an inventory on our ADA spots?
Yeah, it was included. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
Tell me a little bit more, because like, we could do an inventory of how many spots we have.
And as...
The two of us right now.
If an able-bodied person has to walk two blocks after they park to get to their...
Do you mean availability?
Availability and like where they are, like, making sure that we have one on every block, making sure that like if somebody who, who needs an ADA spot comes down here, like, what are, I guess, where are they also? Like, is sort of a separate inventory?
Yes, and so that's work that we did in the last couple of years when there was some spots added. But part of what informs that, too, is like with ADA spots, there is an aspect of an ADA spot about being mobility of I need to park closer to where I'm going, but there's also ADA requirements of things like rampability and where they're, like, there's physical limitations to where they can be. So there are, there are limitations in that standpoint in terms of street parking, which the city controls, as opposed to in lot compartment, which, which the ADA controls. So, you know, in retail parking lots, there's, there's a requirement of how many. So we can look at that, and we can, we can, you know, again, that one's fairly easy. We could look at how many there are, in what proximity are there opportunities for more? We can, we can verify that. And then I think also, along with the like capturing data of how often are they available, but also making sure that they're being turned over so that we don't have. So I think all of that can be in it, but the overall, I think, part of where I hear in your question is, is let's figure out how we maximize the opportunity to provide, provide inventory and accessibility.
I would say just, I mean, big picture, making sure that we're looking at that as a separate category alongside of regular parking, and just making sure that we know that that is also available for our residents who need it. I totally agree with Councilmember Dodd's point about enforcement from us rather than third party. Like, I don't want, I want our residents to obey the law, and I also don't want people who are financially incentivized to catch them the very second that they do. Like I don't want, I I I want our residents to obey the law and I also don't want people who are financially incentivized to catch them the very second that they do. And I think that's all I've got.
Um in terms of like paid parking, non-paid parking, I prefer we don't do paid parking. Um I look at larger cities like Bellevue and they're not doing it yet. Uh Seattle definitely is, uh but. I think that's one of the nice things about going to see like Bellevue and want to attract people to come to our town. So if we start charging for parking, I think that's going to steer. A s- you know, significant number of people away from coming to Bothell to uh visit our businesses. I agree, having a staff member do the work versus a third party is probably the way to go. You want somebody who. Is community oriented and not incentivized to issue those tickets on um exactly the two hour mark. So. Um I'm in agreement with that. Um I think the areas of focus for me would be more. In front of businesses versus ones that are more neighborhood or neighborhood business mix areas. Just thinking about like BECU, if I want to run in there, I would like to get a. You know, a spot somewhere nearby where I can pop in, visit the ATM, pop out. Um or coffee shop, I'm probably gonna spend maybe a couple of hours in there unless I'm studying for a test, I might stay a little longer, but. Those types of businesses rely on the turnover versus a neighborhood or a mixed um area. So that would be. I think priority for me, circulation. And making sure people aren't parking their vehicles and living in the apartments and just using it as their own personal parking spot. But um I don't think we need to. Change code, really wait to change code. I think we can work with what we have and. See the extent of the issue. I don't know if we have any data on the extent of the issue, how long people typically park for. Currently, if we've done any like time trial studies or anything like that, but that could be interesting to see.
I think. I would want to study. Across the zone before we decide where to focus enforcement. Because. People in neighborhoods also park for extended periods of time. It's not just people who live in apartments. And people who live in single family homes or apartments are not more entitled to long term parking. So. I don't want us to already decide where we're gonna enforce before we understand the scope of it.
Appreciate that. I think like classically, if if we weren't currently doing anything, which again. You could argue we're not currently doing anything. But then a parking study is usually the first step because you figure some of these things out, but. I won't, I won't attribute the quote, but somebody at this table maybe have challenged me at one point of that council, we would say all the time that councils. Job is to set the policy and it's staff's job to enforce it. So I think as we, that is framing our consideration of the phasing of this. In that let's, let's focus on what's already there. Get that going and then that becomes the impetus of we can do a study of what are we seeing? Oops, excuse me. What are we seeing based on that implementation and kind of inform more? And I'm hearing that as a theme tonight.
Well, and there's just problems evolve. So we just got my. First in first time in Bothell ever, but first in the neighborhood I live in now sidewalk and walking shoulder path. And someone is already parking on it. So my dad in his wheelchair is already having to go in the under construction road to get around it. So. It's things change in neighborhoods too, especially as we look at growing.
That's a good point. Sorry, I I picked the apartments just because we see. It when we're downtown, we've seen people park long term storage in our lot EF and G, and I think that was just like the thought that came to mind, but I also see it in my own. Neighborhood, there's people that park their cars for extended periods of time and. There should be moving them as well. So sometimes you wonder if they're abandoned and they're not. Usually it's just broken down or they just are looking to store it out of their driveway. So I. Shouldn't pick on parking apartment parkers.
And I I didn't take it any kind of way. I think it's just it's easier on a street with like five houses to know your neighbors and their cars and. You know, oh, you know, Dean's having a garage sale or whatever it is, like whatever's going on. Um I have a friend who lives downtown by the library and he plays a game of how long is that car been there? So it, you know, yeah.
No, I want to thank Councilmember Dodd for bringing that up because I live in an area that's permitted. And I don't know, what is it? Twenty forty eight hours is how long a car can sit on uh parked? And just next door, I have. Two cars that are parked for long, 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 long period, like years. Parked one, it's been there for a couple of years. So thank you for bringing up neighborhoods, whether it's permitted or not. Cars are, there are cars that are essentially abandoned in neighborhoods. So thank you for doing that.
And just to ask a question, like as of right now, like if somebody parks on a sidewalk, like that's something that we could enforce now, correct? Cool.
For those watching at home, that was nods from the police chief.
Okay, I'll jump in. Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, this is been a long time coming, so I'm glad that we're addressing it now. I think that we all come from a space of understanding that right of way is a public good and it's something that's owned by everyone. It's not owned by someone to do their personal self-storage. Um and so. You know, it's it's really tragedy of the commons when people take advantage of it and um we, the people of Bothell do. Hereby, no, we we all um feel the the um the effects of people who. Use it to their advantage, um pass the rules. And so it is time to enforce. I think that it aligns with the intent of our moving around Bothell priority, even though it's not like to the word. I hold up the City of Bellevue's curb management plan that was finalized in twenty twenty-three as pretty much a gold standard. Um and would love to see some of the similar metrics that they use. Okay, they have like forty eight thousand parking spaces, which is a whole orders of magnitude more than we do, but. Um I'd still like to kind of um use their comparison strategies and some of the um the measurements that they use. Uh to sort of help us understand where the pinch points are. During this sort of study and information gathering phase, I think that it sets a good um sort of local precedent too. Gaps and adjustments, I agree with Councilmember Dodd. It should be in-house. I don't wanna um. Uh I don't want to export that uh labor. I also. Don't necessarily think that it has to be the police long term. It could be a downtown steward or it could be, you know. As part of in the parks um sort of like downtown. You know, park um efforts, uh there's a lot of maintenance and stuff and. Um just depending on the time of day and the frequency at which um turnover needs to happen in order to maintain. Access for our businesses especially. That could be something that isn't necessarily in a a police position. So um be creative there um and explore a lot of options. Yeah, I think uh some of the sub priorities that we should be considering are. Um these sort of short um short. Drop off uh zones and and we need to think about where are we parking lime scooters and where are we? So it's more, it needs to be more comprehensive than just like we need to enforce parking, although that is what we need to do. We also need to think about our um our long term plans for the right of way and our public space.
I'm just gonna go what he said.
All right, my turn. Um I'll try to go through the questions pretty quickly. Um I am very grateful that we are bringing this back. I I've am a fan of our of our council's vision. But I'm also a fan of listening to what the public has clearly communicated to us and which in this case is. Especially those who live in downtown very much want to see uh parking enforcement in downtown. Um and so when I look at, you know, the phased approach. You know, the I think the the scope that you've outlined the outlined of the, you know, three hundred and seventy some odd spaces is a good, good place to start. I am fine with starting with enforcement under the current code and and. But I'm also interested in in potential revisions that may come up, especially as we study. Um and better understand the kind of utilization. That there may be future revisions that might be needed and I'm open to seeing proposals on that. Gaps and adjustments. Uh I really appreciate what Councilmember Kurt said about. You know, recognizing that there needs to be dedicated spaces for lime scooters so that our sidewalks can be clear for people to to use. I think that is an opportunity to include here is that if we're talking about. Multimodal approaches to transportation, cars are just one of them. Um you know. How we store bikes and scooters is another part of of this broader conversation. If I if it weren't so late, I would say something about a horse hitch, but I'm moving on. And then the and so, yeah, I think that the avoiding element here is avoiding. Utilizing our police officers for this role. Um I do like the the value. Of making sure that these are folks that are employed by the City of Bothell um so that it can be. You know, this can be a union position, this can be a living wage, this can be people, you know, who are. Um committed to and um and a part of our community and not just, you know. Even if they don't live in Bothell, they are still part of the the Bothell kind of employee family. Rather than contractors that are coming in from out of the city. Um I think that really having those. That investment in our community is important. I don't, I just have questions over like who would that be? And what kind of, you know, hiring needs to happen, especially with the the goal of being um cost neutral? That of, you know, if we're talking about collecting fines for people who overstay their, you know, their space. Beyond the the limited time, then would that be enough to cover the costs of of having folks um on staff? Um and then I'm also thinking another question that I'm not hearing any conversation around what happens at nighttime. Um a lot of time, so right now our code is. You know, if it's a two hour space, it's a two hour space, even if it's between three AM and five AM. I'm guessing there may not be a ton of demand during that time, um but we do have people who will. Not not according to the code, I I read it. And we don't have signs that say parking for two hours between these hour, you know, until this time. And so I don't know what enforcement in the middle of the night would look like, but I think we're gonna still have apartment dwellers. Who know that like, oh, they're not enforcing after eight PM, so I'm gonna park all night. And and that might interfere with businesses in the morning, especially if somebody's opening up early. Um and so I I have some questions around like. What does this look like at specific times of day? I know we're all thinking about daytime and high usage times. But um what are we doing to deter? Folks from parking overnight in spaces that they don't think are going to be enforced and how far are we taking enforcement? So those are some of the the gaps that I've. Thought through and have questions about and great news is that you guys get to figure it out. Thank you.
I am glad you said that because I had that written down and I didn't bring it up at the time. One of the things um in the packet they said was right now our code enforces until five PM. And I absolutely don't think that's late enough. That's like suburban town, everybody shuts down and goes to bed and goes home at five PM and like. That's not the kind of city I think we're trying to create and it's not the kind of city we have. We have cool restaurants, we have places people want to go to, so. Um I I think just, I mean, honestly, somebody parks from. Oh twelve PM to five AM, I don't know that I really care that much. So like, let's just be thoughtful about the date, the the times of day where. Um we expect people to be coming in and out.
I would just wanted to add, I don't know yet if we need to update code because I don't know that I have a grasp on the problems yet. So I'm not. I think that we need more data to understand that. So I didn't speak to it earlier, but. And whatever we do, the science need to reflect that. And I like, I've I've had to park in Seattle on a few times recently and whether it's paid, I mean, usually it's paid cuz. I don't have the same luck there that I do in Bothell. It's cheaper overnight in the sense that like once you're there past like eleven, they're like, oh, you know, it's not as high demand, at least not what I'm doing. And where I'm going. So it's kind of interesting as far as like. Pricing can help spots be moved in the hours we need. I'm not necessarily like we have to charge, but. I don't want us, if if the goal is to turnover parking, make sure it's short term, maybe it's free for two hours or whatever it is, but. I want our whole strategy from the code to charging or not charging to kind of match what our goals are as far as turning over the parking.
Also, I really don't want the job hiring to like manage parking in Bothell at three AM. That doesn't sound fun to me.
I am also, this made me think about charging for parking and I think that there may be a place to. Charge a fair market value, but we don't know what that cost is yet. What if it's fifty cents an hour or something, but. Obviously, the revenue has to balance whatever um means we're looking to. To use to to charge it, but. If we do start pulling revenue from parking enforcement. We need to have a really conscious discussion about where that money is going. Um and I think that it needs to go back into. Into the streetscape. And so I don't know if. Um there's necessarily like even the forty dollar. Like infraction fee. Um I don't think that that needs to go toward. Someone's job to enforce it necessarily. I think that. The enforcement is something that we need to do because we're setting the law and. If we make revenue, it should go towards offsetting the problems and so. I think. My um thoughts on it are really informed similarly by red light cameras or, you know. Automatic enforcement of uh moving violations, but um for. For parking, it's it's similar and it shouldn't be just like. I don't want the public to think that we're. We got them because we have a hole in our budget that we need to fill. I want that money to go to something that's gonna improve um downtown.
I was just gonna say, I really appreciate that because it made me think. First pass cuz I'm open to being convinced by the experts. It should go to making parking less necessary in infrastructure improvements that we have a huge backlog of already. For scooters, biking, walking, rolling, to make all of that more possible. So that we, you know, there's not a shortage of parking, there's thirty ways to get to where you're going.
I would just reinforce that. You know, same like what we're talking about with uh traffic light cameras, you know, investing into safer roadways. Um would this, the the corollary to this would be um investing in multimodal transportation options so that parking becomes less necessary. So I thank my colleagues for bringing that up.
I'll be alone to center and uh prefer that cost recovery is. There for the position, if especially if we're gonna fund it with city dollars and not do a third party contract. Prefer that any kind of revenue coming in goes towards that uh funding of the position.
I have a couple of things I didn't get to. Do you have something to say?
Yes, but I think I can make it part of a wrap up, so.
Okay, perfect. I um. I want to give a just color. I'll start with that kind of the conversation that's been happening right now. Our street space is a really, really big asset we have. That is a lot of real estate that the city controls that is incredibly valuable. And if we have an incredibly valuable asset, I think it is well worth spending money to manage that asset. Like I think I think managing really big assets that you have is a fundamentally good thing. Regardless of if the cost is recovered or not. Um and I think our community pretty clearly has been saying they would like us to manage this asset for a long time because we hear people having issues with it. I I want to double down on the need for actual data, not a study that is like a point in time thing that people. Two years later, like, well, whatever, like I I I think having actual information is is really valuable. Not just for us to manage it, but also like we are the first city in either of our counties to eliminate parking minimums. And we have an opportunity to gather data that nobody else does, that I think could really inform the greater conversation. Around housing and the greater conversation around what this policy looks like in our neighboring cities. And like we all know our housing market doesn't exist in a bubble. And like, we all know our housing market doesn't exist in a bubble. If our neighboring cities adopt policy that make it easier for more housing to build, like reducing parking minimums. That makes life a lot better for Bothell residents too. Like, we're, we're an island in a big sea. Um. Kind of circling back to what I hit on first, um, I just wanted to echo Councilmember Kurtz's comment. Um, and it's shoot one-on-one, like, take the revenue and like invest it back into the neighborhood in which. Um, the revenue was gained, like, so people can actually see physical improvements and things happening from it. Um. Because uh, again, this isn't, I don't, this isn't, we're, we're never gonna make money on this. This is something we're doing to manage an asset. And I think it's really important that we're clear with our community, like, we're not, this isn't a revenue source for us. Like, this isn't something we're relying on to patch holes in the general fund. Like, this isn't something that we need to justify with cost recovery. Like, this is something we're doing because it's important to manage the assets we have. And I mean, I don't know. How much real estate three hundred and some odd parking spaces is, but it's a pretty big asset. Um, so I, I too would love to just manage the asset and have that be our job. And any cost recovery or money that does come in, um, I think we should put it right back into the streetscape where the money was taken.
Okay, so quick, quick summary. Um, I think what we're hearing, clear, clear sentiment of let's invest in. Uh, an in-house program, whatever that may look like. I heard an encouragement of be creative. I think we have some. Solutions in mind that I think can help balance some of these things. Um, I think there's a value of the second step, or we talked a lot about the second step around. Parking study that's data-informed and looks beyond just vehicle parking, uh, we get that too. The last thing I just wanted to note, um, and I hear you loud and clear about um revenues, and I think part of that is also maybe. Just shorthand in terms of talking about a cost-neutral program. The, the thing that I would just share and I, I feel Kwan's eyes in the back of my head, so I feel compelled to say. I think we're gonna always encourage you of when there isn't a legal restriction to revenue. Is the general fund money goes into the general fund and then it's the council's. That's your discretion, right, of how do you spend this and being responsive to the community needs. So I think we would encourage you to to keep it. Not, not create an artificial restriction, but voice that value of, we want to see. What are we doing to improve the, I'm gonna say the environment, I don't mean the environment, but like the, the of downtown. So if we're focusing on downtown. What are we doing to improve with that? Um, I don't think that. This, the, like, in this first step that you're gonna see a revenue windfall. I don't think we'll be accused of that either, but I think we should also. We should be transparent about it. We should be reporting, how many infractions are there? What are we saying? And if there is, then we say, whoa. What do we want to do about this? So I, I, they, I, we will probably, when we come back, I would be surprised if you saw something that had. A restriction in it, but I think what I'm hearing. Or is there's a value there that we need to pay attention to and um at the very least, we will do our level best to bring you back. A reflective value of how are we, how are we administering the program and what are we doing with it? Um, and then again, it's always up to the council to decide. So we, I I hear you and I, I think. We'll try and find that balance between flexibility and honoring the very fact that, again. How the community sees this. The vision of getting around Bothell is never about create new revenue sources. This isn't an economic vitality strategy. This is. Let's make sure that we keep flow through our community. So I think we can, I think we can find that balance and if we get it wrong. You're gonna let us know and we'll uh, we'll be responsive. So I think we got what we're looking for and appreciate it.
I can't tell you guys how happy I am that we decided to kick off the um. Other study session to next week. Um, right now I'm feeling really good about the decision. Um, and with that, we're adjourned.